So we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Blad.
Here. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Legions, after which we will have an invocation, which will be a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification and regular council meetings of September 3 and September 17, 2020, and the work session of September 10, 2020. B. Payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of September 2020. Good evening, Ashley. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Walsh, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I am presenting the Payroll and Material Claims Report for September 2020. Total payroll and material claims for the month were $6,803,589. Payroll-related claims were $3,781,026, and we had changes in filled positions of an increase of three full-time, a decrease of four part-time, and a decrease of 55 seasonal for an overall decrease of 56 positions for the month. Vendor claims totaled $3,022,563. We had a large vendor claim to First American Title Company for $137,768. This will be reimbursed through our Fed Aid projects. We also have the remaining large vendor claims account for 84.9% of all of the vendor claims for the month of September. On the back of the report, we've given you information on our September purchase card activity. We had 1,157 transactions for the month, $431,363, and we had 153 cardholders with transactions. We also had 10 purchase agents with monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This completes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ashley? Okay, before I say thank you, Ashley, this will be your last report to us. Thank you very much for everything that you've done for the city. I know that the decision, your resignation, was an extremely difficult decision, and I want you to know how much I appreciate you and what you've done for the city and how you've helped the city through a number of things over your six years, seven years here. So, thank you very much and good luck in your future.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to C is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Ollie Gurney to continue her service as the Zoo Idaho Zoological Society representative on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Gurney's term will begin October 5, 2020, and will expire October 5, 2022. D. Pocatello Arts Council Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jonah Behaim to continue her service as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council. Ms. Beham's term will begin October 7, 2020, and will expire October 7, 2023. E. Council Decision Zoning Designation Amendment at Corner of North Sixth Avenue and Lander Street. Council may wish to adopt this decision, approve the request by Land Quest Development Incorporated to amend the zoning designation of approximately 8,440 square feet of land located at the corner of North Sixth Avenue and Lander Street from Commercial General CG to Residential Commercial Professional RCP. Council President Adamson.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamations. We do not have any proclamations tonight, and so we'll move to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On October 8, at 9:00 a.m., will be a work session. October 15, 2:00 p.m., will be a council liaison work session clarification meeting. October 15, 5:30 p.m., will be clarification meeting, and 6:00 p.m. will be a regular City Council meeting. Other events, October 2nd and 3rd, Fall Used Book Sale at Marshall Public Library. Contact the library for more information. October 3, Oktoberfest at Zoo Idaho from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. As a reminder, Columbus Day, October 12, city offices are open during the holidays. Sanitation, Deformant Collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. Early voting continues at Bennett County Elections Office, 141 North Sixth Avenue, or the old jail. Voting hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The last date to vote early is October 30. Reminder, Zoo Idaho is open on weekends only until October 31, and face coverings are required in all city government facilities. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Six is Child Care License Denial Appeal Duffy. Wendy Duffy will be present to appeal the decision of Pocatello Police Department staff which denied Ms. Duffy a childcare license. Janay, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor Blad, members of City Council. Janay Perman, Police Licensing. After careful consideration, the Pocatello Police Department denied Wendy Duffy a childcare license due to her being convicted for possession of a controlled substance on October 13, 2010, in which she served a year and a half in prison for that conviction. Wendy was also convicted of theft slash possession of a stolen property in July of 2012.
Any questions for Janay?
No other encounters since 2012?
No.
Wendy.
Sir, can I have her just stand?
Wendy, would you stand there? That one. Thank you.
Bray. I think I'd just like to, first, I'd like to thank you guys for hearing my appeal today. I just wanted to add that many years ago, after a divorce and an ugly...
I'm sorry. Could you get a little closer maybe to the microphone?
It's not right here. Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Unfortunately, these masks, we're gonna have to speak louder than you can.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, I just wanted to say that many years ago, after a divorce and an ugly child custody battle in which I lost my children to my husband, I started making some horrible decisions. These decisions led me to drug addiction and, at the very least, knowing about and being around people who committed criminal activities. Back in 2010, what I believe to be a divine intervention happened, and I was sent back, I was sent to court and charged with possession and sent to prison. Upon, well, while I was in prison, I made a series of better choices that I believe today led me to be a way different person than I used to be. I did extensive drug and alcohol counseling while incarcerated, and upon release, I did some extensive personal counseling, as well as during my drug and alcohol addiction counseling, I became aware that I needed God in my life. And without God in my life, most of my efforts would be minimal and produce minimal fruit. So that is when I got saved. Also, while I was incarcerated, I asked to be moved to Pocatello, Idaho, because I felt like if I had new surroundings, it would be easier for me to succeed. So, since in 2016, I started working at Butterbur's here in Pocatello. There, I made numerous friends, including my fiancee, who have been my biggest supporters while I've been here. I also started ISU doing the Health Information Technologies Program this fall, and originally, I had applied to work in the kitchen at the Early Learning Center at ISU. However, when they called me, they really needed an assistant teacher. So, I applied for this license, and while I waited, I had the opportunity to work with the children supervised by a licensed teacher. I never could have imagined how much I would have enjoyed it or how fulfilling that job would be, and that's why I'm here before you now, asking for this appeal to give me the opportunity to teach and learn from these children.
Questions. We got Linda, then Claudia.
And I just wanted to clarify, so since the last incident in 2012, you have not had any other...
No.
...run-ins with the law at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy, have you had any relapses?
No.
Since then?
No.
So you got sober in 2010?
Yes.
So what led to the 2012 incident?
Actually, the 2012, what happened is that was an incident that happened in 2010.
Okay, so it was all related?
It all was related, yes. It's just they didn't charge me with that till I got out.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, congratulations on your sobriety.
Thank you.
Okay, Rip.
Boise.
So these incidents happened in Boise?
Yes.
Any other questions?
So, it has been, I mean, I'm just making sure that I'm squared away here, so it has been the required 10 years?
On the 13th of October, it will be 10 years.
That just barely hit the 10-year mark. Well, for the first, then October, or then July of 2012, that one is still two years out.
Right, but it was a delayed charge.
Regardless, what the ordinance says is...
No, I understand. Right. I understand. Yep.
Even the police department doesn't have that stringent a policy when it comes to hiring officers?
Yeah, the police department, the IDAPA, is, you know, if you're 18 years or older, you're ineligible if you have used a controlled substance, convicted or not, within three years. So I'm kind of interested and wonder if we don't have kind of an inequity going on here where we apply one standard to potential police officers who clearly work with vulnerable populations, you know, in isolation. And I'm not complaining about the, you know, the police requirement. I'm just looking for some consistency and not finding it.
Couldn't we have staff comment on that?
So, I'm not coming on what it has...
Like respond to, I mean, is that right? The three years?
Yeah, because Chief Schai sent this out to all of us.
So, what is in question tonight is not whether or not the police should hire somebody or not.
No.
What is in question is the ordinance says if there is a citation, even not a conviction, a citation that goes back 10 years ago, that has nothing to do with Ms. Duffy here or anything else, or the police department, that has nothing to do with that. So regardless of what, if there's equity or inequity, tonight's decision is based solely on whether or not the council feels that Ms. Duffy is okay having a childcare license or not. The ordinance, police department, their hands are tied. When there's, the ordinance is very clear if there's a...
It's draconian, though.
If there's a thing...
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
Within 10 years ago, they have no choice but to deny this, and then the opportunity is to come in front of us here.
So the point I'm making is I totally appreciate the fact that our enforcement officers are doing their job exactly as they should, and I'm grateful for that. The point I'm making is that if we have one standard for the public and we have a different standard for potential police officers, I'm making the point that if it's okay for police recruitment, then I'm speaking in favor of saying I believe that we should grant the appeal.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion to grant the appeal.
Second.
Okay, just a minute. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Stevens and a second by Ortega.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I wish to apologize, I was not intending to question our police department or their recruitment or human resources or anything at all. That was not, I just, I saw that it looked like maybe Janay had something she wanted to say, so that's why I was asking if we could hear if she had a response or something, or is that... No. Are we good, Janay? Okay, sorry, I just wanted her to have an opportunity to let us know if there was something that she felt we should know.
Okay, so we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega to grant the childcare license. Yes. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Stevens.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Adamson.
No.
Bray.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven is Child Care License Denial Appeal Passani. Amanda Passani will be present to appeal the decision of Pocatello Police Department staff which denied Ms. Passani a childcare license. Janay.
Janay Perman, Pocatello Police Licensing. After careful consideration, the Pocatello Police Department has denied Amanda Passani her childcare renewal license due to her admission of guilt during an incident that occurred in June, on June 28, 2020. Amanda admitted to officers that she pushed a female subject and slapped a male subject across the face. Amanda was charged with domestic assault for this incident, but convicted of disturbing the peace as a result of the incident.
Janay, you said she has, she's had a license?
She has, yes.
Okay. For how long?
It's been one year.
Okay.
How long did you do it?
Sorry?
How long?
She said one year she set a license.
Is it with this ABC Kids Daycare?
Yes.
Any other questions for Janay? Thank you, Janay. Amanda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the incident that happened at my house, I was allowing my kid's dad visitation. The girl he was seeing at the time showed up at my residence. There were kids present, my three, his other daughter, who was visiting from California at the time, and my best friend's five kids. As soon as the female that came to the house, as soon as she started walking up to the door, I had a friend at my house, I sent my four, well, my three, his other daughter, and my best friend's five kids downstairs with an adult. They were my first priority, was making sure that they were not involved in anything that was going on. So, I sent them downstairs with my friend. I do have upstairs and downstairs with a dividing door in between, so that was shut, and then the altercation took place outside. In May of this year, I had neck and spinal surgery. When the female came, she had got into my face, and she was pushing me backwards, and at which time I was very, very threatened, so I pushed her to put space in between us, and I had backed up, at which point she continued to get into my face, and my kid's father was sitting next to, sitting beside me on a chair. I had a railing right here, and I had my front door on my back. I asked him, I said, "Please get her away from the house." I said, "I don't want to talk to her." I said, "I don't want her at my home." I said, "Our kids are in the house. Today is not the place or the time to have this discussion." And at which point, he looked at me and he said, "You deserve this." He flinched, and I, at that point, hit him one time, at which point he left. The girl continued to stay in my face yelling and screaming for about an additional 10 minutes, and then she had left, and that's when the officer showed up, ending the dispute.
Okay, any questions?
Who called the police, Amanda?
My neighbor did.
Linda?
One of the letters here, I'm just wondering if you could tell us a little about, a little bit about, this appears to be on your behalf from a therapist, a licensed social worker.
Yes.
And it says, you know, and I understand there might be privacy issues here, so, you know, I don't know how much you want to tell us or feel comfortable telling us or can. But this letter concerns me a little bit in that it talks about heightened emotional distress and triggers, and that you're working on that, and that you've made excellent progress, but, and this is towards dealing with a particular health diet, a mental health diagnosis. So, I'm wondering, is this in any way related to this incident, or is this something that would affect your ability to work with children? I mean, this idea of potential triggers, are there anger issues, are there other emotional issues that might affect your ability to work with kids that you would want to talk to us about?
It has nothing to do with me being around children at all. Also, right before the attack, I was sexually assaulted, so I was also very, very vulnerable in the situation. So it has a lot to do with those type of triggers, not anything to do with children.
So, then you feel that's something completely...
Yeah, it is completely separated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Amanda, were you ordered to seek help, or were, is this something you did on your own?
It was ordered that I do a domestic violence in the presence of a child class, which I attended and completed, and I was asked to speak with the counselor, and I was sent to six months probation here in Bennett County. So, it was something that I was thinking about doing even before. It is the one thing that pushed me to do it, though, and it has helped a lot. And I would, even if they said today that I could be off of probation, and I would still go to counseling, just because it does help. And, you know, I am learning a lot, and I think it's beneficial period. So, at this point, I would continue it on my own free will, even if it wasn't enforced.
Good. So you have three kids, and your three kids are kids that are in that age group as well that you'd be babysitting?
They do attend the daycare. I am mainly the kitchen staff, so I make and prepare all of the meals at the facility. Occasionally, I do help with the kids when needed, but yes, my kids do. They do see me while I'm there, and I do have interactions with them while I'm there.
So you work in the kitchen?
Yeah, mainly.
Question, Rip? Question for Janay.
If a license is issued, is it for a specific facility or just a daycare license period?
It is for a daycare license within the city limits of Pocatello. So, for example, if I issued a license to ABC Childcare, she could transfer it to another facility if she chose to.
But it comes back to you for transfer?
It does, well, yes.
But if it comes back to you for transfer, it doesn't get automatically denied and it just gets transferred?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Chris.
Yeah. How typical is, I mean, is it pretty typical, given the situation, that there were children present when this altercation, I mean, even though they were secluded in the basement, is it pretty typical that the court would assign a person to go to a class? Is that just kind of standard?
Yeah, I think it would be standard, given the fact that she was initially charged with domestic.
Right, so it was just kind of, you know, I mean, I can understand that it would be. I'm just asking that, or whether there would have been something exceptional in her, in, I'm sorry, I keep calling you "her" as though you're not in front of me, I apologize.
Amanda.
Amanda.
Thank you.
You know, so this wouldn't necessarily have been because there was something particularly pertinent or exceptional to Amanda's situation. This is just kind of pro forma.
Not from my knowledge, no.
Okay. Okay, other questions?
Amanda, I guess I'm still a little unclear on the circumstances of the incident. I'm trying to understand how it got to the point where you were in, you know, an altercation that was obviously bad enough that your neighbor called the police. I mean, I know you, I know you kind of generally told us about it, but we don't really know, like, what you guys were arguing about, like, what, I mean, help us understand a little bit more what's going on here.
Okay, so the girl that came over to the house was a woman that my kid's dad was seeing. And she wanted to come talk because we don't see eye to eye on certain things. I am not comfortable with my kids going to her house for certain reasons, and she had asked my kid's dad, "Well, I want to know why she doesn't like me, such and such and such." So, I text her because he's like, "She wants to know why she doesn't like you." It's a very juvenile situation that led up to this, in my opinion. So Saturday evening, I had texted her, and I said, basically, "The reason I don't like you is because you don't respect my children," you know? She decided that she wanted to have an in-person conversation at my house, and she took it upon herself to come to my house uninvited because she wanted to talk things out. So, that's what led up to her coming over. And when she first got there, I did ask her to leave, and that's when she got in my face and started yelling and screaming, which led to that.
So, did the police ask if she should be trespass? Because you asked her to leave, and she didn't?
They did. They did.
Okay, so they did trespass?
No, they did not. I really just wanted the situation to go away, so I said that, you know, I would really just like to leave things how they were and to move forward.
So you didn't ask for that, but had you said, "Yes, I want you to follow up on that," she, this other lady was trespassing, she was on your private property without your permission?
Yes.
Okay, other questions?
Okay.
Claudia.
I'm gonna make the motion that this appeal be granted. This is an isolated incident. Ms. Passani works primarily in food preparation and food service in the daycare. She's not providing daycare to the children as her primary employment, and she's seeking help to help her cope with the things that she's got going on in her life, and I want her to be able to have a job and have her kids cared for. So I'm gonna move that we approve the appeal.
One second. We have a motion by Ortega and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Ortega.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Adamson.
Oh.
Cheatham.
No.
Lurick.
No.
Stevens.
Yes.
Flatt?
Yes.
Good job, Amanda.
We'll move to agenda item number eight. It is a final plat Trail Creek Estates Division Four McCormick Rats LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering, has submitted a final plat application to subdivide approximately 14.74 acres into 39 residential lots. The purpose, or the proposed subdivision is located north and west of Trail Creek Estates Division One subdivision. Council President, Adamson, sorry.
I move that we approve the request with the conditions noted.
Second. So we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Over there, I wondered if anybody was here, if they were out enough for you.
That's what I was gonna.
They're like, oh, wait a minute, it might be over. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number nine. It's a welcome resolution. Council may wish to adopt a welcome resolution affirming the City of Pocatello is a welcoming and inclusive city that celebrates diversity, promotes equality, and fosters respect for all residents. The proposed resolution was presented to council at September 10, 2020 work session. Councilwoman Adamson, or Council President Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd first like to recognize Raj that we have here and tell him thank you for all of his excellent work on this resolution and just, um, express our appreciation to him so much for his, um, service on the Human Relations Advisory Committee. And I would also like to move that we adopt the resolution, um, as indicated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you and thank you, Raj. Um, and I don't know, and I hate to ask after a welcoming resolution, we have some people out in the foyer. If you don't have anything else, uh, and we can have, make some seats available, that would be fantastic. Uh, thank you. Agenda item 10 is Port of Health Trust MOU Police Substation. Council may wish to consider a memorandum of understanding MOU with Port of Health Trust PHT for a police substation to be located at 500 South 11th Avenue. PHT has agreed to provide necessary construction and equipment for a new substation to be located on the skywalk of PHT's business office. If approved, council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the MOU, subject to legal department review. The substation will be in the heart of Idaho State University and used by Pocatello Police to complete reports, hold interviews, and other police-related business. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this MOU.
Second.
Subject to legal.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by, that was Stevens, right? Stevens? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Zoo Idaho 20 Year Master Plan. Council may wish to consider adopting a zoo, adopting the Zoo Idaho 20 Year Master Plan as discussed at the September 20, or September 10, 2020 council work session. The master plan will provide a roadmap for Idaho, for Zoo Idaho improvements and resources become avail, as resources become available. Adoption of the master plan does not obligate the city financially in any way. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number 11, the master plan, uh, 20 Year Master Plan for Zoo Idaho, um, as discussed in the September 10 council work session.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Renewal CCOG Mobility Management Agreement. Council may wish to consider a two-year renewal of a, of the current Southeast Idaho Council of Governments CCOG agreement in the amount of $59,900 per year. Cost of the agreement is split between urban and rural funds, 50/50. Bannock Transportation Planning Organization will provide $2,500 of the urban share and Transit Department has significant local, sufficient local funding available to support the remaining amount. No city funds will be used for, for the rural program share. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, the CCOG Mobility Management Agreement.
Second. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. We have a question, it looks like, by Adamson.
I just saw that we had Molly here, so I didn't know if she had anything that she wanted to add or any information for citizens watching about your position in the mobility? No?
You know, I always have a lot to say, but you can go ahead.
You're good, okay, all right. I made the effort to come down here, so. Thanks.
All right, thank you then. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Public Hearing, Community Development Block Grant Needs. This time it's been set aside for council to accept testimony from citizens and organizations on any housing or non-housing community development needs they have identified. The council will also review written statements of internet, of intent to apply for program year 2021. Community Development Block Grant CBGT funding and organization may present their proposals for funding. I declare the public hearing open.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Janine Mitchell. I'm the CBGT Program Manager in the Planning and Development Department. As part of the Citizen Participation Patient Plan, this process is the start of funding our program year 2021. At this time, there is no federal, um, budget that's been approved, so the exact entitlement we're gonna get for program year 2020 is unknown. For the purpose of this plan, staff is going with our entitlement that we got in 2020, which was $449,970. In your packet, you will see the statement of intent to apply, um, from, um, seven agencies. I put eight, but seven, sorry, including two from my department, Neighbor Works Pocatello, Aid for Friends, New Day Products, Big Mama's House, Salvation Army, and St. Vincent de Paul. Staff is working to ensure that all these are national objectives and eligible under HUD's regulation and guidelines. To meet the priority goals of the five-year consolidated plan, staff intends to recommend funding for the five highest priority needs identified in this plan. These include housing rehabilitation, including lead-based paint control, affordable housing creation, public infrastructure improvement, public facility improvements, and, um, public services. The preliminary request for the amount totals $550,000. If the remains consistent, we cannot, of course, fund all of them, but our advisory committee will do a great job to fund everything, um, on a needs basis and make everything fit. Final applications for program year 2021 are due on October 20th, 2020, and a copy of all applications will be sent to you. And eventually, the recommendation will be made from the CBGT Advisory Committee, um, and then it will come to you on December 17th, 2020, to make it into my action plan. Um, that completes my presentation tonight. I know there's people from the community that want to talk to you guys.
Okay, we have a question. We made a commitment to use some of this money for the Aid for Friends. Is that included?
That is.
Okay.
So right off the top, we put in budget because we get a 20% cap for admin, so $89,000 roughly, and the $50,000 that we're doing for Aid for Friends for five years is budgeted in that.
Thank you. Another question, Chris?
Um, is, is the Big Mama's House office located in the, in the city building? Is it, is it in the, the previous pre-clinic?
That is in the, yeah, the previous pre-clinic.
So have, have we had any conversations about the office renovation they're going to do to the city building?
I don't know if any's happened, nothing with, with me.
Well, I've not had that conversation. Uh, Janie and I have talked about the request, but where this is just a notice of intent to apply, we haven't gone further than that.
Is there, I mean, I, I guess I'm just asking, I mean, you know, if it's a city building, do, do they just apply to renovate it without any input from, you know, from the appropriate city departments? I, it just seems a little strange in terms of protocol.
So when we, when we leased the building to that organization, we knew at that time that they were going to be doing some renovations and, and we are okay with that because it's, it's good for both parties, really. And if they do end up, uh, being able to utilize CBGT funds, then there will be some strings attached to those renovations and, um, but we'll deal, we'll deal with those. But it's certainly something we're aware of and it's, it's allowed in the lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Come on, real quick, just to clarify, the date you said that the applications are due, was that October 12?
October 19th is when the final application will be done and will be presented to the advisory committee.
Okay, thank you.
And then just a note on that, what Jared said too, um, money can be spent, federal money can be spent on government buildings if it's not meant for government use.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so have you had any, any other, uh, correspondences that this council has not seen yet in the packet?
I had a comment that somebody came in and called tonight about 4:50 and she was supposed to be here tonight and make her.
They may, they may be here, okay.
Yeah, hopefully she is.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Have we had any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And we will move to, uh, any testimony supporting the application?
Shawna Engen with Neighbor Works Pocatello. Last time I was here, I didn't step up fast enough and they almost cut me off, so I figured I better start right now.
She learned, see how quick she learned?
Yeah, see, you learn fast. Um, we are submitting an application for, um, $55,000. Part of that is $45,000 worth of grants, approximately 3,000 grants, $3,000 of grants for 15 people to, um, do mobile home repair. Um, we did a pilot program that started July of, um, 2000, 2019. And that pilot program, we, it really kind of opened our eyes to what was happening as far as some of the housing situations that we have here in Pocatello and how desperate some of these people really need for repairs. For instance, we had a, a family of four in a mobile home who had no heat. And this was back in the fall of 2019, remember when we had that really, really cold October? They had two children, one of them was a special needs child and had no heat at all. So we were able to use, um, this grant money to get them a furnace. And so, like I said, there, and there was other, other, um, kind of really needed repairs that was happening, a bunch of, for a bunch of other people. So we've decided that maybe this is something that we really need to, um, expand the program a little bit, because before it was just 10 repairs, you know, 10 grants, and this time we've asked for 15. Um, part of that, um, program is also service delivery for our staff to be able to manage that program. And because not only do we, we do the scope for the, for what needs to be done, we have a lead-based assessor come in and look and see if there's any lead-based, lead-based information that needs to be, um, addressed. And then we also, um, help them with, uh, getting the bids, et cetera, for getting those repairs done. And then we manage those funds for them and make sure that the people are paid for those repairs. Um, I don't know if you have any questions for the program?
I don't think so. It doesn't look like it right now. I think there, there may be some in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others supporting the application? If you, if you're in support, you need to hustle up. Get up, let's go. Because I can assure you, I'm moving on.
Good, good evening, Mayor and, and City Council. My name's BJ Stensland. I'm, uh, the Executive Director at Aid for Friends. And, uh, we have been providing services for this community now for 36 years. Emergency homeless shelter for our families, our single men, women, and couples. And we also have another variety of housing opportunities for people as they move away from being homeless. We have programs to assist them. We are applying for two applications. Both are public service. They're not, um, for construction, they're not for, uh, any other project, but we are doing the, the public service. The first one, we've done for years and it is such a valuable, um, product and service that we give to our clients that are at the shelter or, as they are now, we don't have them staying in congregate living. Because of COVID, we have other temporary accommodations that keep them more isolated and safer, but there's still the issue of transportation. So we're asking for $1,350 for PRT tickets to distribute throughout the, the year. Uh, the second, uh, application that we're applying for or submitting is to give, um, case management for clients at our new facility. Once that opens this spring, we're gonna have double the capacity that we had previously at the old shelter. So we don't have one person that, that, that shelter manager worked very hard but had two hats. And now we're gonna split that up, so there's a full-time shelter manager and a full-time case manager. And this is allowable under CBGT because we are part of, uh, we're an access point for HUD to do the HMIS data input. It qualifies especially for case management and these types of services. And I've got 40 seconds left. I just want to thank you. The progress on the new shelter is coming along. It is looking good. It's going to be a tremendous asset. Thank you for the support you've given us on that project. I have 22 seconds. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Any uncommitted to the application?
Good evening, I'm Heather Dusselkoon. I'm just a private citizen. I feel a little bit, um, unprepared to speak tonight. This is something I'm just newly learning about. I was individual, got ahold of Janie at the last minute. I made several attempts, but, um, just couldn't seem to, to connect her at her desk. So I just, um, am in the process of learning, so please be patient with me. Um, I, being that I, I come from a field, I work in a field where I provide administrative support, um, to individuals who are contractors and regulate, um, federal grants, I, I'm kind of familiar with some of the guidelines that, that generally apply to those. And so I think, um, what I mostly want to convey tonight is that it's really important with these federal grants and I think this is, I, I'm so thrilled to learn that we have this opportunity, that we have these block grant, grants that we can give to the community. And there's a lot of needs out there, but it's really important to stay in the lane, um, which is what the original intent is. And although, you know, I don't know all the rules, I'm gonna continue to try to, um, learn about those. Um, I, I think that when it comes to, I, I hope that the CBGT, um, Commission, um, really sticks to that and they, when they prioritize that. Um, and for me, um, because I'm so concerned about, um, the lower income in our community, the two programs that just really, um, stuck out to me were the City of Pocatello's Owner Occupied Housing Repair Program and the, um, Neighbor Works Pocatello Owners Occupied Mobile Home Repair Program. So I think those are super important. There was a couple of questions I have and one thing in particular that kind of raised a little bit of a flag for me, but I'm gonna continue to do more homework on that. Um, and I was told that I can put my comments and concerns in writing to the CBGT Advisory, um, Commission, which I plan to do. So that's all I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others uncommitted? Any opposed to the application? Okay, uh, Janie, would you like to have any, you have anything else to say?
I don't really have any questions.
Any questions? We have one.
Just to come, based on what I see, there's about $100,000, a little more than that. Just to come, based on what I see, there's about $100,000, a little more than that, more applications than what you expect us to have funds for. So the advisory committee will trim back the existing requests, will delete some entirely?
Correct. And sometimes, just because people did intent to apply, they don't, they still have to do the rough draft that gets to me, because right now, the intent to apply, they do not have to meet the national objective or eligibility. So on Monday, when they get the draft into us, that's when we delve deeper to make sure their national objective and the eligibility requirement will come down, and the money part will come down.
Has New Day turned in an amount?
Sorry, what?
So we got Bray and then Adamson. Has New Day turned in the amount they're applying for? Because what I have here doesn't have one.
It's $55,000, and it is part of the overall $555,000 that was added.
My question was, will you just remind me, if I'm remembering correctly, are there vacancies on the CDBG advisory committee right now?
There is, there's one, and there's going to be two.
Okay. I just brought that up because Heather mentioned she was interested in it, so you applied for one of the city commissions.
We have one open, yes, we have two open seats right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, we'll move to agenda item 14. Is a sale of city property. 1080 South First Avenue. Council may wish to accept an offer to purchase a former City of Pocatello Street Department building located at 1080 South First Avenue, and if accepted, authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the sale, subject to legal department review. Councilman Cheatham?
I'm going to recuse myself from discussing agenda item number 14.
Okay. Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the sale of this city property for what was offered and authorize you to sign documents related to the sale, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Do we have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 15. Is an ordinance, 15A. An ordinance, adopt an ordinance and annexing approximately 7.56 acres of land located at the east end of Vista Drive. Said parcel will be zoned residential density, single-family RMS, with a comprehensive map plan designation of residential. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that agenda item number 15A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning a 7.56 acre parcel of land located in the northeast quarter of Section 24, Township 7 South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, and Lot 2, Section 19, Township 6 South, Range 35 East, Boise Meridian, Vanna County, Idaho, by extending the city corporate boundaries at the east end of Vista Drive, set property more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Vanna County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for said land to be zoned residential medium density, single-family, RMS, and the comprehensive plan map designation be residential, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15B, adopt an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title VI, Chapter IV, Animal Services, specifically by amending Section 6.04.010 definitions to incorporate additional defined terms by adding Section 6.04.260 feeding, attracting wildlife pro- permission. Prohibiting citizens from intentionally or knowingly feeding or attracting wildlife within city limits.
Mr. Mayor.
Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Sorry, my eyes just went home. Councilman Cheatham?
I move that ordinance, agenda item number 15B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, municipal corporation of Idaho, revising Title 6.04, Animal Services of the Pocatello Municipal Code, more particularly by amending Section 6.04.010 definitions to incorporate additional defined terms and adding Section 6.04.260, feeding, attracting wildlife prohibition, prohibiting citizens from intentionally or knowingly feeding or attracting wildlife within city limits, providing that all other sections of Title 6.04 not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication into law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Do we discuss it?
We can discuss it now if you would like to.
I really think it's important that we do this. We may be perceived as behind the curve, but when you look at other municipalities in the United States that haven't managed wildlife, it has become a very big problem. And it's one that has all kinds of emotion around it, the more it increases. And so I think that being proactive on this is an important thing for us to be doing.
Can I add to that? You know, this will be the first city in the state of Idaho to do something like this. Across the country, as Roger indicated, cities have actually resorted in many cases to culling deer to eliminate those populations within the city limits. And if we can get the citizens to stop doing this and attracting primarily deer, that's the primary concern, within our city limits and across our highways, where they're actually setting out food in trays to feed them and resulting in collisions and death of deer, perhaps we can discourage this from happening and going into an even bigger problem.
I would like to just support what Councilman Cheatham said. I think that this is not about not caring about wild animals. Fish and game, prior to my being seated on the council, I attended a study session. Fish and game is very clear about the fact that when we artificially feed animals, we get them to congregate, we contribute to the rise and spread of disease among those animals, which causes, in my opinion, unnecessary suffering because eventually they're ill, they can't come and eat, et cetera. And I would hate to see us get to a point where we are having to cull animals. I would much rather see us encourage them to feed in the natural environment. We're lucky enough to have a lot of natural environments surrounding us, so this is not the south side of Chicago, and the deer aren't going to have any place to go. And I just really, really encourage other animal lovers out there to really think about the well-being of the animals and preserving the life of as many wild animals as we can, given that we've infringed on their natural habitat.
Any other comments? Connie, would you please call the roll?
Adamson? Sorry, I do have a comment that I need to make before. So many of you have heard me say this before, but I take an ordinance pretty seriously. An ordinance is a law, and I feel very strongly that if we are going to have a law, we should enforce that law and that we should uphold that law. And so when I hear discussion about, you know, this is going to be very hard to enforce, and we have animal services telling us that we're going to start out with education for the time being and keep the data and go from there, and I hear comments about, well, we can see if this is going to cost us a lot of time and money, and then we can go from there, maybe we can repeal it later. To me, that doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like we're ready for an ordinance at this point, if we're still needing to gather data and if we still don't have that. I agree with what Chris said about the fish and game being clear, that feeding wild animals is not good, and so I don't want anyone to misunderstand me. I am not in favor of people feeding wildlife. I don't want anyone to think that at all. I just do have concerns about it being an ordinance. The fish and game was not able to be clear about whether this would solve our urban deer population problem. I mean, there's a hope that it will, but we don't know that for sure. So I still have concerns about it. I don't want anybody to think that I'm advocating for the feeding of wildlife. I'm certainly not. But I'm concerned about the requirement that this will be for our animal services department and for our police department, and the effort and the time that it will take for them to do that. I would much rather see the fish and game manage that wildlife since that's kind of under their responsibility. So with those concerns, I will be voting no.
Bray?
I'm voting yes because I think it's time for us to step up and commit the city to managing this problem.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
I'm voting yes because I feel like this ordinance is directed towards city residents, not towards managing the wildlife. We're trying to manage people, and that is our purview, so yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we will move to agenda item 16. Items from the audience. This time it's been set aside for to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be heard at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items may be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of three minutes per person, per speaker, and 15 minutes per speaker. Lydia Noble.
My name is Lydia Noble. I live at 2042 Cassius Street here in Pocatello. And what I have, I brought a handout for all of the city council along with the mayor, and I had a few extras, so I passed them out over there. And what this is, is I'm part of an organization called Pocatello for Accountable Government Entities, or CAEGE. And we submitted information several months ago. We really didn't get a response from the city, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you did say that we were amateurs, and I agree with you, we are. But we have refined our data. We've put additional information together, and I'd like to walk you through just very briefly with what we have. So if you look at the sheet, if you have one, that has the two boxes, the boxed columnar document on it. The upper document is showing how we feel Pocatello compares amongst all the cities that we have looked at. And the two things I would like to call your attention to is, in Idaho Falls, look at how many more utility accounts, residential accounts they have. They have 24,600 compared to what Pocatello has at only 16,000. And the commercial accounts, there's a huge discrepancy there. Idaho Falls has over 4,000. We have 1,300, 1,354. Those commercial accounts means income from businesses coming into the city. They have an awful lot more businesses up there than we do. And if you look at the overall budget for Idaho Falls, the bottom line, 282 million compared to Pocatello. But look at the tax ask. Idaho Falls is 38 million, but ours is 30 million, and our budget is a lot smaller. So I just, we're trying to get the city to answer our questions of, we're trying to justify why our property taxes, why the taxes for the city are so large in comparison to other cities we feel are even more like us in size, in population, in commercial utility accounts, that type of thing. So we tried to put this together. Now, down below that, the other boxed section is showing you how cities provide different services. So down below, you can see they're either in-house, which means the city provides things, or they're provided other. I can tell you that animal services are often turned over by cities to the Humane Society. So that's what the chart below is showing you. So on the backside now, we got additional information, which is involving numbers of personnel in each of the cities. And we tried to fit all the personnel within different departments. We kind of standardized the names. And the boxed documents, or the boxed departments that you see at the top are the ones we feel are most common between all the cities. So if you look at the Pocatello numbers, 671 employees for all of those departments from the top section, that is really a large number.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this document. We'll be looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And she was, Lydia was the only one, so thank you very much for joining us tonight, and thank you for your time. With that, we are adjourned.